You see what Councilor... Prima. You see what Councilor put on Facebook about press...
Oh, cut them little. Yeah.
We need to look at that for this meeting starts. I mean, you can't... I understand. She's got a car. She's got a plane. The public can never... I mean, Paul, I'm gonna say it, but I made sure that she won't... Why? It only like that.
If you've seen the memorandum, understanding relative amnesty program, whether they should be...
I've seen the email version of it.
I'll just get that over the break.
You can ask that. Well, we have two minutes. Hey, Pam? Did you have copies of the MOU?
I know.
If you would like. This one's gotta reverse. We'll see if they get both, but if you could, just... Because some people won't get the email.
Oh, Lord, I'm tired. Can't find a sleep Saturday night after that. With it. And then... And the Bears disappointed me. It was a good game.
Yeah. They're playing great, though. They're playing great. They're just a step away.
A much better than last year.
Oh, yeah. Told you, Brett's a step away. Yeah, it really, it really was a step away, you know? For, uh, truly speaking, I mean, it's painful watching that last play. You know, real painful. But it's still, it's still better than what we had to go through in past years. So, uh, huh. Jack.
You pop with it?
Ah.
God. Did you hear this? Did you hear this?
The guy keep moving my glasses, got two. Uh! Uh-oh! Another day I see nothing. Nice.
Too insured.
Hope I can get the side. Like, you know, uh, involved. I can see you keep an eye on Tim. And now I can't really see out of my...
All right. You keep an eye on him?
Yeah, I said I can. I don't see out of my eye. I got one more shot next semester.
Firecracks. You're cool with firecracks.
I gotta go right before this mess. Who you missing? Okay. Is he here?
Where it is, sir. Good evening. The Monday, October 22nd, Common Council meeting is now in session. Would you please stand? And our invitation is by Father Glenn Corbin, Holy Family Parish in St. John the Baptist. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for the invitation. All-powerful, ever-living Creator and Judge of the living and the dead. We seek your protection and guidance in all that is true, good, and beautiful. Guide these local leaders to serve all that is indeed true, good, and beautiful. Help them to respond to the grace you offer them to make decisions that truly serve the common good. Help them to not be deceived by the enemy and those who have fallen prey to its wiles. Help them to make South Bend a place where the culture of right is promoted and the culture of death is shunned. Help them to be instruments to fight corruption on every level and indeed be more courageous in protecting true freedom, to do all that will benefit the individual and our city. Hear our prayer and answer it insofar as it's in accord with your holy and divine will. Amen.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I politely link to the flag of the United States of America and the flag of our always stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones silent. Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember President?
Here.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Teshka?
Here.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Wardy?
Here.
Councilmember Burley?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Non-president.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee on minutes, please.
The Common Council of the City of South Bend, the South Bend City, has been specifically announced in the October 8th, 2018, meeting of the Council of South Bend to be direct. Therefore, we recommend that same be approved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. If anyone's here for Bill 5518 for special events, it's continued to 11:12. That's Bill 5518 regarding special events. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 2018?
2018. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, recognizing and thanking the members of the Monmouth Division 201 Technical Rescue Team for their assistance in North Carolina during the following Hurricane Florence.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes, there is. Oliver Davis, 1801 Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, residing in the great six districts of South Bend.
You're here.
All right. I'd like to ask, uh, Chief Cox, if all the firefighters from Monmouth please come forth.
You're gonna block out the sun.
Mabus, Mabus, baby. We Mabus.
Reply?
Mabus, don't get wet. It's hot.
What's that reply? Sure. He can light up up here, guys. Couple firefighter mustaches. Like seeing that.
Tell ya. It's Mabus. Okay? A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, recognizing and thanking the local members of the Mabus Division 201 Technical Rescue Team for their assistance in North Carolina during and following Hurricane Florence. Whereas the Mabus 2001, Indiana District 2, US and our technical rescue team was started in 2001. It's comprised of 86 members from surrounding fire departments, Clay Fire Territory, Elkhart FD, Goshen, Mishawaka, City of Naus, and other day, ten townships, South Bend, Warsaw, deployed members to assist victims of Hurricane Florence. Whereas the rescue team was deployed to North Carolina for 10 days with 18 members performing swift water rescue and both assisted evacuations during the following Hurricane Florence. And whereas, on the first day of deployment, the team rescued 109 people. And whereas, over the team performed over 160 water rescues and evacuations in the towns of Hadlet, Hendrick County, Greensboro Limited, and Bogart, North Carolina between September 11, 2018, and their return of September 21, 2018. And whereas, the team also saved 20 dogs. And whereas, after the recent deployment, the swift water rescue team, already well-known among their peers for their elite training and abilities for water rescue, became well-known and appreciated by the public nationwide for their skills and dedication. And whereas, no words will ever be adequate to express the city's appreciation for all of first responders who willingly rushed into harm's way to protect others. The members of the rescue team include Clay Fire Territory, uh, work on making sure I try to do these names everybody correctly, Lucas... Blakowski. Thank you. There next to me. Brian Hester. I got you. Elkhart Fire Department, Martin Bryant, Will Kornoff, and Adam Kusba. Goshen Fire Department, Stephen Stefan Schrock. Mishawaka Fire Department, Enai Jarrett and Lane Detwiler. South Bend Fire Department, Chris Baker, Brent Ben... My brain, thank you. Jared Correct? Thank you. Steve Pritz, Dave Pritz. Dave Jester, Mike Comely, Mike Jamison. Warsaw Fire Department, Nate Idan and Brent Pfizer. Now therefore it be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, the South Bend Common Council proudly recognizes and expresses gratitude to the Monmouth 2001, Indiana, uh, District 2, US and our technical rescue team. Section 2, the Common Council also expresses its great appreciation to all first responders who sacrificed their safety for the safety of others. Section 3, may you all remain safe from harm. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approved by the mayor. I was, um, I don't know, I was watching TV, but some people were having a discussion, and I realized a whole group of our, um, members in our community went. And it dawned on me, I said, we must honor them when they get home. It is truly a blessing to see when our members of our community go and help others all across our nation, because there are times when we gonna need other people from across the nation to come help us. And it's good to do unto others as we would have them to do unto ourselves. And it is truly a esteemed honor to stand out here with you, um, love you. And I'm honored to be the one to promote this. And I'm glad you and the councilmen to sign along with us, so we all are a team that honor all of these fine, um, fine people who are, put their lives in a challenging situation and came back victorious.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the team would like to say a few words before Chief Cox?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, what's that?
It named areas.
Battalion Chief Chris Baker, 1220 South Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana, Fire Department. Um, no, we're fortunate to be able to, uh, to go on this, uh, all the long days, weeks, uh, that we spend training on the East Race here. And, uh, and every one of these members have been through that rigorously. So it was nice to be able to, uh, go out and, um, and assist and, uh, and use those skills. So I think we, uh, definitely represented our, our own agencies, our own cities, and the state of Indiana really well. So thank you for allowing us to come.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Brian?
Brian. Thank you, thank you.
Captain Vanbrady, South Bend Fire Department, 1220 South Michigan. Um, I just wanna say that, uh, these guys are the best water rescue professionals in the country. There's no doubt about it. And I'm just real proud to be a part of it. And I think everyone else says as well. So thank you for your support and all you do for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll let Chief Cox actually say something briefly.
So my name is Steve Cox. I'm the Fire Chief of the South Bend Fire Department, 1220 South Michigan Street. Um, it's really important, I think, for everybody in this community to realize this didn't happen by accident, uh, at all. I have the privilege of coming before the council every year, presenting my budget. And every year at budget time, I make sure that I, I bring to you and to the citizens of South Bend, the professionalism, the capacity, the capabilities of this team, and how, uh, how strong they are in what they do. Uh, this team was requested specifically from the state of, by the state of North Carolina, uh, by colleagues of, uh, several members of this team, uh, that are nationally known. Um, so I cannot overstate, I can't say this enough, I can't overstate professionalism, the capacity, the capabilities, and the, uh, the competence that this local team provides. And when, you know, the chips were down in North Carolina, and there were, there were people to be rescued, they wanted our team there to be able to help them in some of the worst parts of the state where the flooding, the hurricane, et cetera, were all happening. I'd also like to thank, because a lot of them are in attendance today, family members and friends of the, the team members. Uh, it goes without saying that they, they went to North Carolina, they rode the storm out, they're from Indiana. So I'm guessing that most of them, none, probably none of you guys have actually lived through a hurricane before, right? Or... So, long story short, um, obviously their families were concerned for their well-being, their safety, and everything along those lines. And they went selflessly to, to help their fellow, uh, people in North Carolina to help them out. So I just wanna give kudos to the, everybody on the team, and I appreciate the council's support for all of the activities that they take part in all year long.
Thank you. With that...
One more, one more.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
We have, uh, one of my chiefs, Baker, was gonna come up and talk to us about the other chiefs who are in attendance here from our...
Okay.
We're gonna announce them. We have several chiefs here tonight. So representing, uh, the city of Elkhart, I believe, Chief Steve Camp is with us. Could you please stay? Um, Chief Woodward from the city of Mishawaka. We have, uh, in the back as well, Chief Dory and Chief Nelson, both from, uh, Clay Township. I'm not seeing if we got any others there. Can they come and join us? Um, but understand that, you know, that this team is, is put together, we have six different agencies represented, so, uh, to have these chiefs allow their members to, to partake in this and everybody work together, that then itself is a pretty big undertaking. Uh, so, thanks, thank you.
Now that all the chiefs has come forth, um, we are...
Any other chief I can say?
Uh, not due. Okay, we're good. I turn it over to you, President Scott.
Thank you. Um, we'll take comment from council right now. We'll start with the second district and work our way down.
Just wanna thank you all for representing Indiana so well. It's exciting to see us all working together. And even more exciting, thank you, Chief, for sharing that you were specifically requested and asked for. Um, I've seen, uh, the work that you guys do, like in the East Race, and it's really exciting what's happening right here in South Bend. And you're just an excellent shining example, risking your lives for us every day. Thank you.
Ms. McBride?
I echo the same thing. I thank you all for your service and, uh, you're second to none, you know, of your work and your ethic. And so it is resounding in the state, uh, and nationally. So again, a job well done, and great to see you all came home safely. Thank you.
Ms. Broden?
Thank you for your service, particularly in, uh, an emergency situation, um, that you, you called and you responded. Um, I guess, I wanna say, your, your ability to go there hinges, as, as has already been indicated, on, uh, your families. And I would dare say also, um, the other, um, professionals who fill in your slots, right? When, when you take off. So, um, I don't know who in the audience is here, um, in terms of the backfill folks, um, who are public service officials, but I, I would actually like the families to stand up and to receive a round of applause, um, before the night is done.
Thank you all.
You do it every day, right? In sending, um, your loved ones in harm's way. But I think there's a, a particular element of gratitude that we feel, and certainly , um, the individuals in the communities that you go and rescue feel, um, you know, having stepped up to do that and to answer the call. And I love the fact someone had said, or, or kind of the thought that comes to mind is, we, the best, we sent our best, you know? And you're doing the best work. So, um, so congratulations for the, the hard work, the training, um, your, your high degree of professionalism, and, and most important, um, the amazing service that you provide in an emergency situation.
Thank you. Mr. Teshka?
Yes, I would just like to echo what, uh, Councilman Broden said, and thank the families. I know that, as, as Councilman Broden alluded to, it's a situation where, we know you, you send your, your loved one into harm way, in harm's way every day, or at least into the possibility of harm's way. Uh, and this was a situation where you guys went, uh, knowing that you were walking into a dangerous situation. And so thank you for that. Thank you for, for being the elite team that you are, uh, for being nationally recognized, and for being, uh, just one more way how, uh, South Bend and this region, uh, is really leading in, in so many ways. Uh, it's also great to see the way that, again, the region has come together, right? We're talking about, uh, folks from Elkhart, South Bend, Goshen, Mishawaka, um, and, and just the brotherhood that you guys have. Um, thank you, and you're an inspiration to all of us.
Mr. Wardy?
Uh, very sincere thank you. All of your work and your professionalism are very, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your service to, uh, our community and the country. Thank you.
I wish to thank each and every one of you for your, um, courage and unselfish acts to go into harm's way, to serve others, but most importantly, to save others. Uh, your work has not gone unnoticed. Uh, we are very thrilled to be in your presence. We thank the family members for sharing each and every one of you with us, but most importantly, to our community and to all of the different areas that you have and probably will be called upon to go again. Uh, it's best to know that we have the best. And so we appreciate each and every one of you. And Chief Cox, I look forward to seeing you doing the budget process.
And finally, uh, as President, you get the last to speak, so they said it all. I can't say it any better. Joe Broden beat me to the punch on the family. Uh, we do appreciate the families and, and everything that you guys do. I do have one question. Did you hand out waterproof brochures, uh, on training for, uh, water, water rescue? So, um, so bring them all up here. Um, I've seen you guys work. I've been down the East Race many times, uh, watching you guys train, you know, firefighters from New York and elsewhere. And, uh, truly proud, and, uh, thank you all. And thank you, Vice President Davis, for bringing this forward. So, uh, we've got, we'll open up to the public. Uh, so, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Make your way past all the firemen and come to the podium.
My name is Tyler Brown, uh, 222, Mississauga, South Bend. I like to commend these guys, 'cause I know how I used to be part of their league. I worked 37 years, uh, for North Carolina Public Service, and 17 of them was on the line department. When you're in the air, on the ground, when you're called to go to another state, have been hit by a disaster, I know how it feels to be with your family and work with other people from other parts of the country. And you should feel proud, every one of them. It's an honor. I got it. You pray that you get, you'll find out how good you are when you often work with others, professionals. And, uh, it's a proud moment that you can hold your weight and do things to help people that have been hit by a disaster. So I like to just thank you guys. I'm honored to be standing here with you, with you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please come to the podium.
Hi, Steve Castle, 422 Kennedy Drive. Um, I wanted to say a special thank you, because I have over 10 relatives in North Carolina. And, uh, it's heartwarming that people from my community went to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jesse Davis, Peel Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I have several family members that were firemen. Uh, my great-grandfather was the first Fire Chief at Fire Station 1 out on the East Coast. I don't remember what town it was. Um, I have relatives who were part of the fire station at, uh, Unira. And my uncle Barry Robertson served with Mishawaka Fire Department for many years. But I've got to see these guys in action at the East Race. It's really cool to go down there and watch them do what they do. Unfortunately, I've also got to see them in action in emergencies locally here. Um, I recall one night in Mishawaka, a young man was walking across the waterfall at Central Park, right next to the police station, and slipped and went underwater, never came back up. I was there when the guy went in the water. I'm not a very good swimmer. Obviously, I wasn't jumping in the water. A, uh, Mishawaka Police Officer actually was there and dove into the water. It was a freezing night, terrible weather. He couldn't find the guy, and the river rescue guys came out there. And I know they spent hours and hours into the, I think, almost midnight, uh, because it became a rescue effort at that point, until they ended up recovering the person out of the river. So kudos to you guys for what you do. Uh, unfortunately, we have to watch you in action sometimes here in our community. But, uh, thank you for going out and helping some other communities in need as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not. Anyone want to make it past all the firefighters to speak against? We got to. It's procedure, so. With that, we'll turn it back to the, uh, council.
Motion to adjourn by a commission.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Max Ford. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice job. Great job, you guys. Welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service over the head. Especially the, uh, you're a fireman. All right. Congratulations. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Get a quick take and we'll back out. You're good, dude. You're good. We're talking about... You are. You're talking about... I'm in them, Oliver. Fire roll, white fire. Cut that off. Water. Rubber boat. All right. Thank you all. You can stay if you like. Total bomb.
You had enough down here, huh? Good job.
Thank you all.
Oh, I was late. I'm meeting right along.
Was it productive? It's good meeting you. Thanks, Chief. I think we're working soon on the number of people. All right. We'll continue with the meeting. Um, we have no reports from city offices. Laurel Sullivan is representing the mayor's office. Thank you for being here. And entertain a motion to rise the committee of the whole.
Some of them.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. You want to stay there?
Thank you.
All right.
Committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per ordinance. With that, would the city clerk please read 5318?
5318. Southern hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance seeking a special exception for property located at 121 East Cut Street, Councilman and District Number 2 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
So, the organization committee met this afternoon and will bring that one to you favorable. Thank you.
Chair President, please.
Good evening, Angela, Councilman, your ring mission with office, looking at the floor of this building. Request petition to rezone from LI Light Industrial to MU Mixed Use and seeking a special exception for group residents of the property highlighted here in red. The existing area is a mixture of light industrial and mixed use as you front on Michigan Avenue, Michigan Street, sorry. The existing property is a vacant, uh, industrial warehouse that is planned to be used and converted for, uh, the weather amnesty, which is, falls under the group residence category. The site plan does not propose any significant changes to the site, although it does show the required landscaping, um, that would be required for the current ordinance. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a petitioner in this?
Yes.
Uh, petitioner would like to add just a, a brief statement as well. Please state your name and address.
David Gatorveen with Hope Ministries, 432 South Wapahia Boulevard. So we are hoping to clearly use this building for weather amnesty services this winter. Uh, as you know, we have provided weather amnesty in this community for many years, and it's a service we each provide, uh, to keep the folks who are living on our streets safe and warm in the coldest nights of the year. So, I just want to speak out in support of this as a provider, because I've been receiving many, many questions from people in the community saying, "We're opening up another facility across the street. It's permanent." No, this is temporary, and it's needed, and it's 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And those folks who experience homelessness during those hours. And quite frankly, I just, I feel for them. I don't know what they must do, the trauma that they must experience not knowing if this is going to pass or not. That would be really hard for me to live with. So, I really just hope that this will be voted unanimously. It's something our community needs, and I'm so grateful to David Vanderbein and Hope Ministries for stepping up when this city and our community needs this, that they've done this. So, thank you for your power.
Jesse Davis, Peel Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Obviously, everybody is mentioning the bridge, and we know there was a tent city that was constructed under there, basically to bring awareness to the community, because we've had this homeless issue for years, years. It's been out there, but it's been kind of out of sight, out of mind. So, the tents were to provide a little more shelter for these people who didn't really have anywhere to go and a little bit of privacy. But the main reason was to bring awareness, because when people drove down Main Street underneath that bridge, they saw those red and white tents. And they realized that there were people living out there, basically all winter long. So, I'm glad they found a place. I hope in the long run, they find a more permanent place. I know we've had issues getting community members behind this gateway center that they want to put together. But I think this is a good temporary fix. Myself personally, I'm still concerned. They're there from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. What happens between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on those days when it's zero or below zero? Those folks can't be in that building when, during those hours. So, we're only covering half of the realm here. The other time, when they can't be in that building, guess what? They're going to be downtown. You're going to see them downtown. You're going to see them in the library. You're going to see them in businesses because there's only so many hours they can be in this place. Granted, it's great they got a warm place to sleep, but during the daytime, they're still freezing outside while we're in our warm offices and our warm homes and our warm cars.
Tyler Brown, 222 East Barrow Street, City South Bend. The homeless issue still plague our community. We, the community, and the people that represent our voice in the community, we got to deal with it so much here. And we're upset about that. We are fortunate to have somewhere to go. Like you said after the God book, times in the, it already rained, and the people that didn't have nowhere to go, got in the weather. We, as a community in South Bend, do some wonderful things. And I want to make this clear to everybody. But we, as a community, we got to get this mail on here. And we're counting on you that we're elected, the governor, and sit and make sound decisions for us here. I don't know if the answers come, not so smart, if there's bright people here. We got to get this homeless thing under control. And I know it's hard. There's medical issues, there's a lot of things that go away. But we would be very proud if you, the leaders of our community, because you've been elected by the public, to make sound decisions for us. Get this thing knocked out of the park. I know it's difficult, but we can do this. I'm living in East Bend here. It's not going to go away. So, let's come together and knock this out of the park. I'm proud of you. If it's only temporary, but I would like to see something more dynamic and something still dark to help these people, it's unfortunate. I don't know how it is to be homeless, but I still know how it is to be homeless. So, when I was a little kid, I studied in a food line, food once a month, give food for our family. And they were very touching to me because when I got older, I swore to God that I would never stay in a food line. So, get this thing killed.
Seeing no one else in favor? Anyone in opposition?
Andrew, 206 East Tusk Street. The perspective you have of that building, I've watched for 45 years in this community because I've entered the doorway of the overhead building of Sibley Machine that provided jobs in this community over all of those years. I am not opposed to the timeline that has been presented to you this evening for November 1st to April 15th. But you, as the administrators of this community, and the mayor of this city, need to decide as this lovely gentleman just mentioned.
Please address your comments to the council.
I don't know his name. I would, I would mention him, but I've been in meetings, I've been in meetings now for four years with David Vanderbein, with Hope Rescue, and Steve Camilleri. We've had plenty of conversations because as a manufacturer in this community, we have made every attempt to employ the homeless. It's a very, very, very difficult issue. I say against for the reason that I want to hold you accountable. We have talked about this. There was a community organization early in this year addressing this issue specifically with the gateway discussion, and the city never showed up. The city never attended any of those meetings. So, Gavin Thorland, I'm going to talk specifically to you. We talk about innovation in this community every day of the week. We should be creative enough to find solutions to this problem. I have a jacket I'd love to show you that was designed and produced in the city of Detroit for the homeless. In cooperation, they gained the attention of General Motors.
Dianeska?
It is a jacket and a sleeping bag by Empowerment Incorporated that has produced a jacket for the homeless, that is also a sleeping bag, that protects you against the environment overnight, 20 below zero. And they were creative enough to come up with.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Council. Steve Camilleri, Center for the Homeless, 813 South Michigan. I just want to speak in support of our best partner, Hope Ministries. As the largest provider of homeless services in our community, the Center for the Homeless is just across the street from 121 Tuck Street. And so there are already 200 people in our community who live at the Center for the Homeless, who experience homelessness. So I just, I see it every day. And I think this isn't just a response to people under the bridge. This is a response to our neighbors, friends in our community who experience homelessness. It snowed on Saturday night.
Mr. Camilleri, make sure you address your comments to the-
I just want to address everybody.
No, please, address your comments to the council only.
Sure, sure. I just think that it snowed on Saturday night. I don't know everybody in this room, so I don't know if anyone in this room experienced homelessness on Saturday night. But I know the people at the concert were really cold. Imagine you did not have a place to go back to. I am so thrilled that the city is presenting this opportunity for upwards of 50 people in this community. And by the way, that's not enough. We have more people who are on the streets in South Bend. We saw people all over the community over the past several years. They were visibly under the bridge, but they existed and experienced homelessness before that bridge in construction ever happened. This has been a long time coming. There are no other agencies right now besides Hope Ministries and the Center for the Homeless who are providing weather amnesty. And it's unfortunate that we have to, but we would say November 1st to April 15th, but the fact is, we needed it, we needed weather amnesty this past Saturday night. So I just want to speak out in support of this as a provider, because I've been receiving many, many questions from people in the community saying, "We're opening up another facility across the street. It's permanent." No, this is temporary, and it's needed, and it's 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. And those folks who experience homelessness during those hours. And quite frankly, I, I just, I feel for them. I, I don't know what they must do, the trauma that they must experience not knowing if this is going to pass or not. That would be really hard for me to live with. So I really just hope that this will be voted unanimously. It's something our community needs, and I'm so grateful to David Vanderbein and Hope Ministries for stepping up when this city and our community needs this, that they've done this. So thank you for your power.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Obviously, everybody is mentioning the bridge, and we know there was a tent city that was constructed under there basically to bring awareness to the community, because we've had this homeless issue for years, years. It's been out there, but it's been kind of out of sight, out of mind. So the tents were to provide a little more shelter for these people who didn't really have anywhere to go, and a little bit of privacy. But the main reason was to bring awareness, because when people drove down Main Street underneath that bridge, they saw those red and white tents. And they realized that there were people living out there basically all winter long. So I'm glad they found a place. I hope in the long run, they find a more permanent place. I know we've had issues getting community members behind this Gateway Center that they want to put together. But I think this is a good temporary fix. Myself personally, I'm still concerned. They're, they're there from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. What happens between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on those days when it's zero or below zero? Those folks can't be in that building when, during those hours. So we're only covering half of the realm here. The other time, when they can't be in that building, guess what? They're going to be downtown. You're going to see them downtown. You're going to see them in the library. You're going to see them in businesses, because there's only so many hours they can be in this place. Granted, it's great they got a warm place to sleep, but during the daytime, they're still freezing outside while we're in our warm offices and our warm homes and our warm cars.
I'm in Brown River 222 East, the Barcree Street, South Bend. The homeless issue is still plaguing our community. We, the community, and the people that represent our voice in the community, we got to deal with some of this. And we'll say about that. We are fortunate to have somewhere to go. Like you said after the Godbrook Times, in the, it already rained, and the people that didn't have nowhere to go, got in the weather. We, as a community in South Bend, do some wonderful things. And I'm going to make this clear to everybody. But we, as a community, we got to get this mail on here. And we're counting on you there with the electric, the government, our city, and make sound decisions for our city. I don't know if the answers come not so smart, if there's bright people here. We got to get this homeless thing under control. And I know it's hard. There's medical issues, there's a lot of things that go away. But we'd be very proud if you, the leaders of our community, because you've been elected by the public, to make sound decisions for us. Get this thing knocked out of the park. I know it's difficult, but we can do this. I'm literally in each one of you. It's not going to go away. So let's come together and knock this out of the park. I'm proud of you. If it's only temporary, but I would like to see something more dynamic and something still dark to help these people, it's unfortunate. I don't know how I used to be homeless, but I still know how I used to be homeless. So when I was a little kid, I studied in a food line. Food once a month, give food for our family. And they've been touching to me, because when I got older, I swore to God that I would never stay in a food line. So get this thing care.
Seeing no one else in favor? Anyone in opposition?
Handlow, 206 East Tuck Street. The perspective you have of that building, I've watched for 45 years in this community because I've entered the doorway of the overhead building of Sibley Machine that provided jobs in this community over all of those years. I am not opposed to the timeline that has been presented to you this evening for November 1st to April 15th. But you, as the administrators of this community, and the mayor of this city, need to decide, as this lovely gentleman just mentioned-
Please address your comments to the council.
I don't know his name. I would, I would mention him, but I've been in meeting, I've been in meetings now for four years with David Vanderbein, with Hope Rescue, and Steve Camilleri. We've had plenty of conversations, because as a manufacturer in this community, we have made every attempt to employ the homeless. It's a very, very, very difficult issue. I say against for the reason that I want to hold you accountable. We have talked about this. There was a community organization early in this year addressing this issue specifically with the Gateway Discussion, and the city never showed up. The city never attended any of those meetings. So Gavin Thorly, I'm going to talk specifically to you. We talk about innovation in this community every day of the week. We should be creative enough to find solutions to this problem. I have a jacket I'd love to show you that was designed and produced in the city of Detroit for the homeless. In cooperation, they gained the attention of General Motors.
Diane's got it.
It is a jacket and a sleeping bag by Empowerment Incorporated that has produced a jacket for the homeless, that is also a sleeping bag, that protects you against the environment overnight, 20 below zero. And they were creative enough to come up with crazy ideas to try to solve the problem. Now Detroit's got a huge problem. They have 20,000 homeless folks, of which we have no idea how many are on the street. You're asking for us to house 40 to 70 people a night, but as one gentleman said, where did they go during the day? I called the police on Saturday. They love the overhang on Sibley, on our Sibley Building. It has a nice overhang, protection from the wind, but we defecate, we trash, we use drugs. We have to address this issue. So I'm against for the reason that I want to hold you accountable. I'm in favor for this short period of time, but I really don't want to be here again next year. And the city and this council needs to address this issue and come to the community to look for answers, because we're willing to have this conversation. You guys have shown up, and I apologize.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. There is an opportunity for rebuttal. Five minutes from the petitioner. If, if you'd like, you don't need to.
I don't need five minutes. I just want to thank the people who have spoken for and against. I think we are 100% on board that this is not the answer to our community's problems. This is a stopgap. This is to keep people alive over the winter. We are 100% committed to long-term solutions. We know there's plans in place. We want to make them happen. So I appreciate your input, and we echo the desire to bring long-term permanent solutions to this community.
Could you stand here? Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, it's here there. Thanks. Mr. Vanderbein, could you explain? We had talked about this in area plan. For the sun sets probably around 5:00, 5:30 in this time of year. Yeah, the place opens up at 8:00. But I mentioned that you talked about the eating and why, why 8:00, in your opinion, is still a decent time, given the fact that the sun sets late, early. Could you share that?
Yes, so most of the folks who use the weather amnesty services eat their meals at Hope Ministries, lunch and dinner. And so our plan is to have a check-in process at Hope. They can come to Hope, eat dinner, they can check in, they'll get a ticket or some sort of card. Our dinner service goes to about 7:30, so at that point, they can walk over from Hope to this location. They won't have to wait outside.
What time does dinner start?
Dinner starts usually around 6:30, but they can come and wait in the waiting room earlier, depending on how cold it is.
And this is the only weather amnesty in the whole county, correct?
The Center for the Homeless is also participating in weather amnesty.
Yeah, but between the two of you, you are the only ones that are-
That is correct.
That is correct. And the closest one we heard today was Goshen.
To my knowledge.
To your knowledge. Okay. And then? No comments? Not, not anymore. I actually have comments from now.
If you don't mind, we'll go to, we'll finish questions first, and then we'll-
Okay, questions. Go ahead. Questions?
So I'll ask a question. There was, there was a question raised regarding, sorry, I don't know who I'm asking it to.
What was the question? You know the question?
Sorry, yeah, if you don't, there was a question raised to security.
Okay.
And I just wanted to touch base to make sure that that had answered as well. Okay, security and cleanup as well.
So our, we will staff that building from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. So from 7:00 p.m. to, until everybody's in the building, we will have staff monitoring what's going on around the building. Once they're in the building, they stay in the building, and we monitor them. They don't leave and wander around the neighborhood. In the morning, we make sure that they leave the area, and then once they leave the area, then we no longer know where they go, what they do. But during the time, between those hours that they're in our care, we, we have eyes on them the whole time.
Were there any other questions or just comments?
I guess I have a question. In committee, you talked about, back to this emergency declaration. Is there anything in the current petition or in your filings, like with state, that would disallow if you were to solve the staffing issue? That this could be declared an emergency, could, an emergency warming area? Can somebody connect that for me? Is there, is there something?
No, the current language of the lease, which we have not finalized the lease yet, does specify that we will only be in the building between 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. Again, our feeling is if, if we needed to provide a warming place, we would prefer to do that at our building on 432 South Lafayette, because we already have staff. We have to add additional paid staff to do it in this building during the day.
So I hear a preference, and I hear certainly a staffing hurdle in those cases. And nothing specific in the lease.
Currently, it is in the lease that says-
Not to have.
That we would not be in the building-
Right.
During daytime hours.
Leads to another question real quick. So the difference of when we announce warming centers across the community for people to go through, go to, could you explain the key difference between the warming centers and their hours of operation and the weather amnesty?
So weather amnesty is an 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. service. The warming centers, and you'll have to forgive me, I don't remember all the details of the warming centers. When an emergency declaration is made, certain locations are open and made available to folks. And I believe it's as long as the declaration's in effect, but I don't know.
Can you come up? Can you come up real quick? So, I mean, when they talk about a warming center, that is not going to be your location?
No.
That would be in another location. And Mr. Paul, can you say?
Yes, and typically, to whatever would trigger that emergency, it would have to be 10 degrees below. And I, I mean, I think we can agree that that's what happens at 0, 10, 20, 30, 40 degrees. And we have found in our community, this weather amnesty used to be contingent on temperature. 14 years ago, when David and I started, it was when the temperature was 26 degrees. And there were studies and research out that you're being outside in a sustained amount of time in 26 degree weather. Well, we thought that was kind of silly, right? And are we going to move to 32, 40? We just know in this community, somewhere around November 1st to mid-April, it's going to be cold. Frankly, again, we could have used it a couple weeks ago. But the emergency warming and cooling centers typically haven't gone unless they're 10 degrees below. And I believe that's often triggered by the county. And the county, but I'm sure the city makes a call on that as well. But we've worked with the county, and the local continuum task force has worked with the county. But this is something that we're going to need every night from November to April.
Gotcha. I'm at peace. Thank you.
And then questions will go from Sharon and kind of down the line this way. Sharon?
Actually, I think Councilman Davis touched on it, because I know, like, for instance, part of the King Center has warming stations. So there's stations throughout the city that are declared warming stations, correct? So aside from the Center for the Homeless and Hope, there are warming stations throughout the city. So I just wanted to make sure that there was some clarification that, you know, whether if you're not responsible, when they go out on the street, there are some locations where they can get you on. So that's-
Councilmember Tesh, can I believe you had a question?
I have just a comment, so I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we were done with questions. We have comments. Councilmember Roden, did you have a comment?
So-
Or did you have a question?
Future leases, comment. Future leases could contemplate an exception for daytime staying in the event of emergency declaration, correct?
So you mean future after April 15? We-
Or weather amnesty in general. I guess I'm trying to find out if there's anything that would preclude, if anything precluded us from including or looking at whether it's you this year or whether it's some other, you know, individual, set organization partnering with the city. It would seem to me you'd want, we would want to trigger that as an option, that you could warm in place at an amnesty location, if in the event of a declaration of a countywide emergency. I just comment. No need to comment back.
Comment, Councilmember Tesh?
Yeah, so I guess my comment is just, I don't, I guess I don't like any of this, right? I don't like, I don't like the agreement that it's called an agreement to rezone. I don't like the, that sentence in, in Section 1. I don't like that this feels rushed, but I recognize that that's because of our, thank you, Ms. Moll, I believe it was, that's partly on us and our failure to act on permanent support housing, right? So I think whatever needs to be done, and I may not have all the information here, but just in some brief conversations that I've had, I don't think there's a homeless task force that includes the local officials. I think we are invited with you, with you guys to come and, and be there, and I want to do that. I will be reaching out to you guys, because we need to wrap our heads, our heads and our hands around this issue. But I think also, it's a regional issue, and I think we need regional partners in this as well. We already mentioned that the nearest weather amnesty is in Goshen, and that's okay if, you know, if Stop Bend's where it's going to be, but I think we need regional partners in this, because it is a regional problem. So there's that comment as well. But I definitely think that moving out of this, right, so this is a very, very much a rushed emergency, as I think David said, stopgap measure, right? This is so that we can protect the lives of folks who would otherwise be out on the streets in the nighttime and sub-zero temperatures, this winter. But I don't want to be back here. I know Ms. Vole doesn't want us to be back here, and I don't think anybody wants us to be back here again next year doing this. And so whatever it takes, I'm willing to be a part of it. I want to be a part of it. Homelessness task force, whatever it is, inter-agency, inter-community, whatever it is, let's do it. Let's, we got to get back.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah. So as a representative, sometimes we meet outside our district. This was Ms. McBride and I met with business owners, I'll say, within the triangle between Sample, Michigan, the River O tracks, basically Bronson. I know Ms. Preston could not be there. So it was concerned citizens, business owners within that area. And I just want to make a statement on their behalf. They are supportive with concern. You know, they really didn't want to come and speak against or anything like that, but they do have concerns of this going in. There's a lot of good things going on in that area. I know Ms. Meyer took back, and we have concerns about, you know, safety for people coming and going. Mossburg printing is there, Zyker Cleaners, their building has an incubator and some creativity going on there as well. I know the Sibley Building is getting repurposed. And what I'm going to say is also to Department of Community Investment, that we need to look at that long-term. Look at that area, pay attention to those businesses there. Honestly, it's not my district. I kind of had to look up Tuck Street on Google Maps to make sure I was going the right way, because I kind of go by that, you know, coming and going from work and not really paying attention. But driving around that, looking at the area and the concern that's there, you know, they are concerned. They are supportive of this being in place. The one thing I did mention is, if this problem can't get solved, that this may have, have to happen again. And Jake, I completely agree with what you're saying, but I think there's always going to be some people outliers out there that are going to need some type of winter amnesty, even if there's permanent housing solution somewhere. Because of what goes on at, like, Hope and Center for the Homeless, not everybody can play by the rules that are there, but we still have to care for where they're at in the world, just as human beings. They're supportive of this initiative being temporary. I'm supportive of this being temporary. I'm supportive of this coming back before us and rezoning it back. I also would say, if we're coming into this again, that I know it's not a good fit. I was at the store meetings. We start looking at other places. If this is going to be a shared responsibility to the city, that we move it around different parts of the city. Different parts that make sense for the people that are homeless, you know, it's not going to be way out in the county where no one can get to it or anything. But it needs to be a shared experience that concerned businesses, concerned citizens with, I'll use the poor phrase of "not my backyard," but if we all understand that burden and share that load, that's what we should do. I'm going to be supporting this tonight, and I'll be supporting it when we turn it right back. But as a representative, Ms. McBride, did I do it justice? Is there anything you want to add? We were at a team with those businesses. We are concerned about any issues with crime. We want police there. We've reached out to them. They're going to be doing training for those people on awareness and also patrols down in that area. We literally met on a Monday, last Monday, and Sunday night, a gentleman was arrested down in that area for selling synthetic marijuana. So the police are down there. They're aware, they're patrolling. We want to make sure everybody's safe, and it works for everybody as a temporary solution. So, sorry.
Going on a little long? Comment from President Davis?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank those, David Vanderbein and Steve Camilleri, for what they do in our community, with Hope Rescue Mission and the Center for the Homeless. This is not an easy situation, and as a social worker, I clearly understand that. Ms. Vole, I'd like to take you up. I will be calling you. I want to reach out to you. I like the concept of what you shared about the city of Detroit. As you may aware, be aware, last year, this council passed a resolution regarding putting even some of the panhandlers to work. And we were unanimous in that decision, even though our administration had a different viewpoint on that. But I do believe that if we, not all the panhandlers will work. I understand that. But like I shared with the media, 30% of the panhandlers can be put to work, and some didn't use, that's 30% off the streets of what we are dealing with. And 30% in baseball analogies is to get you to the Hall of Fame. And so that's what we have to consider, 30%, 40% to get them off. Because we have to consider options where we can utilize the strengths of our people who are homeless and utilize their innovative skills and do things. So I really appreciated your comments. I think that we need to do that. I challenge, and I will, I have reached out to our administration, and I plan to continue to reach out to them, to bring that plan back next year, and also to continue to work with our homeless population, because we don't need to be having all these discussions in October, September. We need to start in January. And so by the time we get to the summertime, we can make these kind of decisions in warm weather and not necessarily anybody feel rough. Also want to state that I challenge, and I think we need to, as a council and a city, I, I work with our attorney to do it, to send letters out to city of Michawaka, St. Joe County, and other entities. Today, we came together to work about stopping violence. But we need to come together as a community to work on homelessness. Because when I was going to grad school and social work schools, it was the county and mental health departments that handled these kind of issues. County, it's like they have the health department, it's the county minister. It was not to the, cities have their play in it, but it was the county. And now, the city of South Bend is taking care of all of the county homelessness situations. Everything. The city of Michawaka said, "Oh, we, we moving forward." Or St. Joe, "We don't have it." Yes, you do. St. Joe has it. City of Michawaka has it. New Carlisle, Osceola, all, but everybody comes here. And it puts on this body here, this city council, on our mayor, all the pressure, where it should be not only be put on us, but the county council, President Morton, and, and our commissioners should have that. So letters need to be written to our commissioners. Money needs to be set aside from the commissioners, from our county council, to lead out and those kind of things. City of Michawaka needs to take place in this. It is ridiculous. Our councilships need to cover this issue. It's a community, St. Joe County, does somebody have to go all the way over to Goshen? That's to get some help? That's not going to happen. They come in here. And that covers the whole entire city. So I thank those in our community for doing that, but we have to put some more challenging pressures, or at least invite them to the table where our county officials can help us not only again with violence, because you take care of these kind of situations, it also cuts into your violence situation. It cuts into a lot of the other things that we are dealing with. And, because violence comes in a lot of different ways. As we can look at it, you hear from tenants that they're scared to be in that situation. That's public safety. This is a public safety issue also, and not just a health issue. So I think that as we look at working on our, um, making our community safe, it has to have the prosecutor and everything else, all those issues coming together like we did this morning, but our topic is homelessness as it relates to violence, homelessness as it relates to economic development. Our chamber of commerce needs to look into those kind of things. So I am pleased tonight to support this, and I'm also glad to know there's a place to go in our daytime too, for those, for those, because, um, it doesn't just get cold at night, it's cold throughout the whole day. And, uh, I appreciate your efforts and I plan to support.
Seeing other comments, is there a motion from council?
I don't know, do you have any comments? Okay, I would like to say that, one, this is a very important issue, is one, that what we're doing tonight is just a temporary response, and I am in total agreement that we have to look at a more permanent solution. I do know that the administration had worked on moving forward, uh, the concept for the gateway, and they, that resulted in a lot of different discussions, viewpoints, and so I would challenge not only the administration, but the council, that we have to come together and to work towards a permanent solution, and that we have to have the right individuals at the table, we have to talk to the citizens, the business, uh, communities, and we have to really look at how we, as a community, I'm in total agreement with Councilmember Davis, that we gotta look beyond South Bend, we gotta look at the other entities that should be part of this much broad-based discussion. But we have to, uh, start the discussions now. I do know that there's some individuals who've been meeting, but we have to make sure that as many individuals as possible is part of those discussions, and that we need to have a timeline and strategy so that every two months we should be getting a report in terms of where we're at, what needs to happen as we move forward. So, um, I definitely will be supporting, uh, this particular, um, bill, but a number of, uh, efforts and work must continue, and again, we have to open the discussions, and we have to look, uh, from a broad-based perspective. For the city of South Bend, clearly, the city of South Bend is the main, um, provider at this particular time, along with the other institutions. We have to look at mental health, we have to look at a number of social agencies that will need to come together to really address this issue. But we gotta look beyond South Bend, invite Mishawaka, to the county and others to be part of the discussions as well.
Um, well, you talked about being open, I would just encourage our administration, as we look at these other meetings, is to make sure that our, um, attorney knows and included on this, um, any of these legal issues regarding, um, um, writing up things that will affect homeless issues, it's nice for him to be able to get information prior to our meetings tonight, um, so we can, um, we can ask him questions, we can go over it. The more things we get ahead of time and not have any one of us, um, to be caught by surprise or have to rush it down, I think it's just better teamwork. Thank you.
Is there a motion from council?
Moving to, yeah. Make a motion to send the full council favor.
Second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Jay Kirk, would you please read 54-18?
54-18, Public Works in Property Vacation Vacate the following described properties, alley fourteen east and width running one hundred and thirty-two feet from west or south right-of-way of West Madison Street to northwest slash southeast alley running between North Taylor and North Williams Street.
Speaker, committee ear, please.
John. Oh, uh, property, uh, Public Works in Property Vacation gave this a favorable recognition, uh, recommendation to full council after our hearing this afternoon.
Thank you. Speaker, committee ear, please. I'm sorry, excuse their presenter, please.
Do it again. My name's Joe Wetherly, uh, 420 West Madison Street in South Bend here, 4601. I would like to vacate the alley that neighbors both of my properties for a couple of reasons. Possibly, um, in the future, maybe a garage on that property. Right now my property, um, I live at 420 West Madison Street, the property's like really small, so we want to make the yard a little bigger and just vacate the alley, maybe use it as driveway and maybe possibly, um, as a cutout so we can drive up onto the property for, uh, move to garage in the future.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
My name is Amy Mitchell. I live at 411 Lincoln Way West. We have a very busy alley. Um, and it's dangerous to go out, man, I'm nervous.
It's okay.
It's, it's dangerous to go out onto Williams, and then we can go on Taylor, but if you want to cross over Lincoln Way, it's impossible. So we take the small alley, go out on Madison, hit the light, then we can go on to Williams. There's a apartment house that's next to me, there's six apartments, there's another apartment house, there's four apartments in there, but that's vacant right now. But the other place was vacant too, but they redid it. So there's a lot of traffic in that alley. We do need the three, the short alley and the long alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Is there rebuttal from, from petitioner?
Uh, yeah, that, that smaller alley does get, does get, uh, a little busy too. I was wanting, I was really hoping to close it off to, you know, kind of protect me and my family from going from, you know, both of the properties that we own now, and, um, right now it's, it's trafficked by like, um, it's kind of like uses like a dog park and people walk their dogs around there too, and don't clean them, clean up after them. And, um, right now I'm making, uh, I'm doing the yard maintenance on both properties and just trying to keep it really nice, and I think if we could have like, uh, that whole area contained, it would kind of brighten up a bit.
Yeah, just as a question, in the short alley that they're referring to, that's the alley that you want to vacate? It's not another?
Yes.
Portion of that alley? They, they actually use the portion of the alley that you would like to vacate?
Yeah, some people are still using it.
Okay.
But there, the long alley goes from, uh, Williams Street to Taylor Street, and, uh, Taylor Street is, um, a really low-traffic street as well, so to get access, um, to those properties off of Taylor Street is pretty, pretty easy and it's pretty safe. In fact, um, there's less people that park on a Taylor Street, so you get a better view from the west and a better view to the right, because it's a film right here.
And Williams, a little more heavily trafficked, a little bit more difficult?
Williams is more traffic than Taylor, I believe, and there's, there's more curb parking there on the basis, so it's hard to see the right line.
Okay. I'm gonna ask a question just from the district representative, just in terms of your analysis.
Yes, um, there, so there is a parallel alley between Lincoln Way and, and Madison, and he's on Madison. So on Williams, which turns into Portage, there is a lot of traffic. And, and yes, Taylor, there's very little traffic coming that way. Um, I, first of all, I, I'm gonna be supportive in favor because I think having alleys that close to houses and, and a lot of traffic, there's safety issues as well. Um, with a reasonable solution that the car, of course cars have the convenience of going much faster than, you know, people walking or any burden to, uh, safety, um, can, there, there is that option to take it down to Taylor and out-tailor for, for a safety, uh, reason, so, um, I'm still gonna be supportive of it. So there is a option other than just that alley, uh, to go over to Madison.
So it's safe for anyone that uses that alley to use Taylor?
Yeah, Taylor is, is very low-traffic.
Okay, okay. Any other questions at this time? Yes?
Sue, um, and I guess, uh, relative to that, and, uh, the, um, more dense use with apartments that are adjacent to this, um, there aren't any curb cuts, right, from that parking lot? Is it, is anyone from engineering, did, uh, did they look at this, I guess?
Yeah, they, they were in favor. Carol said that, um...
But turning radiuses in and out, I mean, just in and out of that parking lot into that alleyway, that's all been cleared?
That's the parking lot. They're makeshift.
Okay. Okay, so there's two, um...
An engineer.
Parking lots, and the only, um...
Sorry.
...ingress egresses is, will be through this, um, parallel alleyway, right, the long one?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? They're still checking down here, so give me a second.
Sure.
Can I see it?
Come back out. These two are makeshift. This is why it wants to close, so you come out here and go that way.
Okay. With that, we entertain a motion from council. I'm moving to send to the full council favorably.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Um, city clerk, would you please read 55-18?
55-18, and orders of the common council of the city of South Bend Indiana, um, this one is fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is, this is...
Yeah, can I entertain a motion to continue 55-18 to 11-12?
Some more.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. With that, I'll entertain a motion to rise and resolve from the committee board.
Hold on.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Well, um... Boiler up. Full council's now back in session. Uh, Ms. Fowler, um, first I'd like to entertain a motion to hear the...
To accept a second.
Do we have to read it first, and then the sub? Bob? What's that?
Motion to accept a second, ten?
For a second. 418. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Ms. Fowler, um, would you read 34-18?
34-18, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in this township, contiguous therewith, Council Manic District Number Six, 486, sixty-one point seven-five tract acre of land on the west side of New Energy Drive, approximately three hundred and fifty feet north of State Road Twenty-Three, South Bend, Indiana, and this is council portion only.
Okay.
This is in...
Counsel, passage?
Hang on a minute, is there any, um, discussion for 34-18?
Um, I just want a question for our attorney. Um, is there anybody, well, is there anybody from, um, oh, I see, um...
Mr. Corcoran.
Mr. Corcoran, from, uh, can we have him just to read into the record, the letter?
Sure. So, uh, on...
Name and address.
Tim Corcoran, uh, director of planning, fourteenth floor of this building. Uh, October sixteenth of, um, this, this year, uh, Mike DeVita of the planning department sent a letter to council and President Scott, and talked about the impact of change in the requested zoning in the Blad annexation area fiscal plan. Uh, at the October eighteenth, twenty eighteen meeting of the common council, the council held second reading on bill number 34-18, which proposes a voluntary annex and zone the Blad annexation area to the city of South Bend. Based on public comment at second reading, the petitioner amended its zoning request to GI, uh, from GI, General Industrial District, as originally filed to LI, Light Industrial District. At that October eighth meeting, the council also adopted the fiscal plan for the Blad annexation area. Although the fiscal plan on page four states that the petitioner seeks to rezone the land to GI, General Industrial District, please note the petitioner's amended zoning request to LI, Light Industrial District would have no material impact on the policy concerning the provision of services as described in the adopted fiscal plan. Thus, any change requested from, uh, the GI to LI for the Blad and series annexations has no effect on the approved fiscal plan.
Thank you, thank you. Um, can I tell you, after, um, pending the passage of this tonight, could you give us the calendar that you outlined to, in order for this to be taken care of from the mayor? You have to sign so many days and all that kind of things, remember?
Well, the mayor must, um, resign within ten days of, to be presenting the bill. At that point, there is a, uh, an appeal period of thirty days from and after the date that the, um, mayor signs, and the annexation will be effective at the end of that thirty day period if there is no appeal. If there is an appeal, it will become effective when that appeal was denied, if it's denied. Uh, the only issue at this point is if there is an appeal filed and it tends in court for up to sixty days, uh, the annexation would not take effect before the end of this year, becoming here, and therefore, because no annexation can be, uh, become effective in the year before a sentence, the annexation would not become effective until January first, twenty.
Thank you, I appreciate your kindness.
Thank you for that question, too. Um, any other questions, comments?
Make a motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call, please, 34-18.
34-18, Councilmember Prescott.
So?
Aye. Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Corcoran?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, 35-18, do you entertain a mo, motion for the sub?
Some more.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, would you please read that sub?
35-18, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in this township, contiguous therewith, Council Manic District Number Six, for a two-hundred-and-twenty-nine acre tract of land north of the St. Joseph Valley Parkway right-of-way, approximately, approximately eleven hundred and fifty feet from the intersection of State Road Twenty-Three and the St. Joseph Valley Parkway, South Bend, Indiana, and this is council portion only.
Is there any comments or questions? Mr. Vice President Davis?
Um, Mr. Ch, um, Palmer, um, does that letter from Mike DeVita also address this issue too, or was that was just the other letter?
Yeah, it addressed both, um, both of the annexations.
Okay, so basically from, um, Mr. Corcoran? Mr. Corcoran, could you just, just state that, something to that extent? That's all I would like to have.
All right. Mr. Corcoran, director of planning, fourteenth floor of this building, uh, just to reiterate the letter that I wrote, uh, read, uh, in the previous annexation, um, that...
Applies.
Huh?
Applies.
That applies to this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Motion for passage.
Second.
That's an official ditto. For the record, Ms. Fowler, roll call.
35-18, Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Corcoran?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye, I'd like to thank you for reading the letter, appreciate it.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We will now move to 53, 53-18.
53-18, third reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, seeking a special exception used for property located at one-twenty-one East Tut Street, Council Manic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Looking to approve.
Passage.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Corcoran?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 54-18, please.
54-18, third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described properties, alley fourteen inches width, width running one hundred and thirty-two feet from west or south right away of West Madison Street, northwest southeast alley running between North Taylor and North Williams Street.
Motion for passage.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, we'll move to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you read eighteen fifty-five, please?
Eighteen fifty-five. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for the property located at seventeen fifteen South Dale Avenue and seventeen seventeen South Dale Avenue.
Is there a committee report? Yes, the committee of the zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring bill eighteen fifty-five with no recommendation due to the fact that the petitioner wasn't there this afternoon. If the petitioner is here this evening, well, welcome to come forth. Thank you, the petitioner is here, thank you for the timing.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the area planning commission's offices located on eleventh floor of this building. The petitioner is seeking a special exception for a two-family dwelling unit on these two cars shown here at seven fifteen and seven seventeen South Dale Avenue. The duplex will be constructed across the property line and requires a special exception approval by the council under the single-family designation. Uh, this comes to you from the area board of zoning appeals, the favorable recommendation. There was nobody at the hearing, uh, President speak, uh, on either side of the petition.
Okay, thank you. Um, would the petitioner just give us brief statement of the project that you're doing? Please state your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is David Geroge, uh, owner of Twenty Ten Investment Group LLC. Uh, my address is three one three one Spring Grove Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, requesting a variance to construct a duplex and two adjacent blocks on seventeen fifteen South Dale Avenue and seventeen seventeen South Dale Avenue. I think the duplex would be a good add for the community. Uh, this will complement the school, church, and the surrounding houses. This will also help fill the, the empty lots in the city. I also looked at the study that the city commissioned in which the study by Zimmern Volk Associates, a housing consulting firm, says the, the city of South Bend can, uh, can accommodate a total of a hundred and eighty to two hundred and thirty new missing middle housing units annually. The city has plenty of space for smaller housing projects in areas where builders haven't always looked, the study says.
Thank you, sir. Um, we appreciate that investment. Uh, is there any questions or comments for the petitioner or the presenter?
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of, forgot where I'm at, eighteen fifty-five, please come to the podium. Seen none, anyone wishing to speak against eighteen fifty-five, please come to the podium. Turn it back, counsel.
Motion for adoption, second.
Ms. Fowler?
Eighteen fifty-five. Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, eighteen fifty-six, please.
Eighteen fifty-six. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board of zoning appeals for property located at three forty East Hopeback Avenue.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the zoning and annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Vice President Davis, is there a presenter?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the area planning commission's offices located on eleventh floor of this building. Petitioner is seeking a special exception used for the hydroelectric dam, which will be located under Sykes Park. Um, as a utility that will be servicing Notre Dame, they require your approval under that special exception within the city district. Uh, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area board of zoning appeals. There was no one at the meeting to speak in opposition.
Thank you. Uh, is there a petitioner? Mr. Dance?
Thank you, Mike Dance from Dance Honor Associates, sixteen forty-three Thomas Drive, in South Bend, representing the city and the University of Notre Dame. Angela said, what we're asking for is just approval of a special exception so Notre Dame can construct multimillion dollar hydroelectric facility on the Sykes Park. As I mentioned to council, uh, there's a fifty-year lease between the city, South Bend, Park Board, and the university's board of facilities. And as part of the agreement, the University of Notre Dame will also be, uh, giving the city a million dollars for the improvements for Sykes Park. If you have any questions for me, I would like to answer them.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you, sir. Seen none, anyone wishing to speak in favor, eighteen fifty-six, please come to the podium. Seen none, anyone wishing to speak against eighteen fifty-six, please come to the podium. Now you, Angela. Turn it back to counsel, motion for adoption, second. Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, eighteen sixty-two, please.
Eighteen sixty-two. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to accept a recoverable grant from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Risk.
Make a motion for the purposes of public hearing to hear eighteen sixty-three and eighteen sixty-four together?
Second.
Eighteen sixty-two.
Eighteen sixty-three.
Aye.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Fowler, would you read eighteen sixty-three, and then we'll get on with the presentation.
Eighteen sixty-three. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, to accept a recoverable grant from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, lead hazard reduction demonstrating, demonstration grant and healthy homes supplemental funding.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Community investment, oh, I'm sorry, committee report. Sorry, community investment has no recommendation due to lack of power.
Thank you, a presenter?
Pam Meyer, Department of Community Investment, with offices on fourteenth floor of this building. These two resolutions are being requested to get your approval of, um, two grants that are being awarded that create, to the city of South Bend, that create a pool of resources to address lead in various homes in the city of South Bend. The resolutions are part of the grant agreement, so in order for us to send the grant agreement back to the state to begin to start the process, uh, we need the resolutions approved. Um, the total of the grant awarded is six hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. It, it will address lead in homeowner and rental units built prior to nineteen seventy-eight with a priority, uh, to those units that will be leased or are owned by families or individuals with children under the age of six and/or pregnant persons living in the home. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
The key way that, for the public, for them to reach out to you regarding these grants, um, would be?
Uh, they can call three one one, which many people have been doing. They can go directly to the state of Indiana. It's, um, both of those things are on the city's website. They can come to the Department of Community Investment. They can also go to the Health Department and various other partner agencies in the community, like the New Northwest, um, community health workers have applications, community wellness partners, the WIC office has applications, and so do hospitals.
Uh, majority of it is for the, those who have young children. What about for our senior citizens, or for those who live in, because a lot of them have older homes? And, uh, what, what happens in those kind of, uh?
If, if it is a, um, senior, like a grandparent or, um, you know, a sibling or someone who's taking care of a child that can spend significant amount of time in the home, that significant time is defined by this particular program as a total of sixty hours per year, so that house would also be eligible.
Okay, so the, the focus of everything else is to having the child in the house?
That's true.
And that's the key?
Yes.
If they just have an elderly person in the house, that will not necessarily qualify for this kind of grant?
It can qualify, but it would not be ranked as a priority in terms of, um, number of houses to be done.
The let's already done our damage, Charles.
Yeah, we've done.
It's developing mine.
Okay, no problems, it's always good to know.
Pam, um, you might have already sent it to us, but can you recap what you just said so we can get it out through counsel on who to contact and all that?
Oh, sure, you mean via email?
Yeah.
Let me put on our website.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
I appreciate that.
I was going to ask for a fact sheet.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Kind of the relevant pieces of it, plus the, uh, agencies you listed, the number of them, and locations, that would be great, thank you.
Then we can help disseminate. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Seen none, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of either eighteen sixty-two or eighteen sixty-three, please come to the podium. Seen none, anyone wishing to speak against eighteen sixty-two or eighteen sixty-three, please come to the podium. Seen none.
Make a motion for the adoption of eighteen sixty-two?
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Eighteen sixty-two. Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Make a motion for the passage of eighteen sixty-three?
Second. Ms. Fowler?
Eighteen sixty-three. Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Burden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesco?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Uh, would you please read eighteen sixty-four?
Eighteen sixty-four. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as forty-eight thirty-six Western Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one nine, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a seven-year real property tax abatement for Naupman LLC.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Oh, committee report, I'm sorry, community investment sent this far with no recommendation due to lack of power.
Thank you. Presenter?
Austin Damage Community Investment, fourteenth floor of this building. Counsel, good evening. Um, again, um, the old KFC LLC is proposing a Dairy Queen Grill and Chill off of Western Avenue, uh, forty-eight six three. Um, just to touch on some highlights of the project, um, big part is bringing jobs to the west side of South Bend, or bringing more jobs to the west side of South Bend. We're looking at over one point six million dollar investment between land, property, and equipment. Um, currently, the parcel, um, that we're looking at, there's, there's nothing there, there's no taxes being generated. Um, over ten years of just real estate property taxes, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, um, uh, taxes being generated. Um, a couple other highlights, parcel size is around an acre, um, looking at a three hundred, uh, excuse me, three thousand square foot building. Um, timeframe for the build out, roughly three months. Um, the petitioner would like to, uh, get started right away, but still working on, uh, bids from, uh, potential, um, so looking as soon as possible, and again, over one point six million in investment. Um, you know, as we look at the seven-year, um, real estate phase-in, property tax abatement, um, again, zero taxes on the parcel at this time. Yes, ninety thousand will be abated over the seven years, but they will also be paying ninety, uh, excuse me, sixty thousand, over sixty thousand over that seven-year period as well. Go to the next slide. Again, between the real estate property tax, uh, taxes that will be generated, the new employment and the taxes from there, you're looking at over two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars of taxes over a course of ten years. Um, as we look at the jobs, we're looking at, you know, twenty new full-time jobs, twenty-five part-time jobs. Uh, this is going to be year-round. Um, one of the, uh, great things about it is, in the summertime, there should be a, um, you know, more, uh, jobs created just because of the influx of the industry. Um, that area of town, we think it'd be awesome, you have the high school there, a lot of students, maybe their first opportunity, um, working. Um, you have, uh, people from the community that would be able to walk. Um, you eliminate a lot of the barriers when it comes to transportation for jobs um, in other areas in the community. One other thing I wanted to touch on in our meeting earlier, when we talked about it being a retail business, um, there are examples of retail businesses that we've given tax abatements, um, in the last few years. Um, and if we look in the municipal code, you shared it with a couple of council members, but the municipal code, uh, does grant tax abatements for retail. Um, we've approved the Crooked View Brewery in, I believe, two thousand and three, um, as well as Martin Supermarket, which is also located on that side of town, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. So we have seen examples. And again, we look at this as a revitalization area, um, a tax abatement impact area, so we're really looking at the opportunity to help revitalize, support development, new development, and job creation in that area. And we do have the petitioner here, Ms. Patel, um, if there are any questions.
Patel, would you please come and, uh, make a brief statement? Your name and address, please. Thank you.
Um, my name is Wandana Patel, um, address is one zero one zero zero, Hambury Drive, Granger, Indiana. Um, as Austin mentioned, we covered pretty much everything, so we are, um, planning to build three thousand, uh, three thousand square foot grill and chill. It would be, of course, a great opportunity for jobs, um, around that area. Um, I already have a small store in the area, and the problem you run into is transportation and people, the amount of people looking for a job in that, um, side of town. I have offered jobs to other stores, but because of the transportation, they're not able to. And I think the amount of questions, the amount of phone calls and text messages I get from either ex-employees or current employees, like, when are we going to have the grill and chill built? Oh, I, I have a family member who wanting a job, I have a cousin who wants a job. The amount of high school kids inquire about it. So I think it would be a great opportunity for them to walk to work and, and have a, a, that opportunity. Um, so we're trying to create a place to be for families instead of just a fast food. So that's, that's our goal, and hopefully we could, um, make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Yes, Ms. Patel.
Vice President Davis?
She knows my concern about, I think the regulation does require black walnut ice cream. I went over this with her.
Yes.
When I met with her, I did go over this with her on Friday when I met with them. I'm gonna thank her for coming out, and Mr. Damage for coming out, and we did discuss the ice cream situation. And I think we have made some negotiations on that matter. So, I felt very comfortable after leaving, just talking with her, because we don't have that on that side of town.
Wow.
I think this is gonna be really great, and right across from the fitness area right there, you can go to the fitness area, then you can have your ice cream, and then Perkins is right there. I just think it's wonderful. It takes the holistic approach from that standpoint. So, I just welcome you, I thank you.
Thanks.
And have you done any further thinking regarding the ice cream situation?
Yes, actually, I've sent an email out to US Foods, who's our distributor, to see if they have black walnut.
I appreciate it, ma'am. I thank you. And the six districts will be with us.
His vote is not contingent on that. No quid pro quo.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Just comments or just what?
Comments.
Comments.
Just wanna thank you for bringing this opportunity, and again, a nod to the Department of Community Investment, as well as our wonderful business owners in recognizing the needs of that community. All of the things that you're saying, again, you're really paying attention to what's going on in that neighborhood, opportunities for people to get to work by foot, putting this investment right in the middle of the community that needs it so much. So, I just really wanna thank you for continuing this effort, and again, appreciating the business owner. One of my favorite spots, I already talked to my niece, five buck lunch, we're there all the way.
Anybody else? Ms. Broden?
Yes, you've done a great job elsewhere with your other expansions and renovations.
Yes.
So, I wanna acknowledge that and thank you for a great track record. I think what's compelling for this petition in that particular location, or even in that corridor, if you were to locate elsewhere, is what you have put forth as really a willingness to spur, you know, workforce development there, and in particular, the training component that you've put forth in this petition. Certainly, you know, I know a number of kids, high schoolers, who have, you know, gone to Dairy Queen and have found that is a very good first, you know, job. So, and I understand that's true across your other locations. So, you've done a great job, and again, what makes this compelling to me is that workforce component that you're trying to hit on this. So, it's very important in my approval, and I wish you the best of luck in that.
Thank you.
Mr. Teschman?
Yeah, so, the other location that you have, just down the road a ways from there, what's the plan with that property?
So, of course, we have decided to either put that on the market. There were a few inquiries that I am trying to follow up with that, too. There were inquiries about putting a drive-through taco place, because that specific building does have a drive-through.
Black walnut tacos.
But, there's nothing set in it yet. We're following up with those needs to see if not, we'll be putting that on the market. Of course, as a business owner, I always have a plan B. So, my plan B is if I can do either or, we are planning to put a small drive-through car wash, just one, one lane drive.
And just for clarification, that location is only open seasonally, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then this new location is open year-round?
Year-round, yes.
Okay. To Ms. Broden's point, your track record is great. Thank you for bringing this, and I think, again, that the compelling part of this is with, and Mr. Damage mentioned this earlier, with the new Martins there, Western of Mayflower, then if we were to have this development, you see momentum building, right, on a main corridor in our state. So, thank you for being willing to invest in that and all the risks that you take as a small business owner, and good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else? If that will open up to the public, if anyone wishing to speak in favor, could come to the podium for 1864. Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak against 1864, please come to the podium. Turn back, council.
Sorry, we have a comment.
No, that's all right. I just wanted to really thank the petitioner, Community Investment, for addressing the questions that I raised during the committee meeting this afternoon. I really appreciate you getting back to me so quickly. Again, as we begin to see what is happening on Western Avenue from Mayflower with the Martins, and I appreciate Councilmember Davis, because that was not an easy task, but we made it happen, and you begin to see the impact. So, I'm very pleased that you're gonna be placing a very outstanding business in that corridor. I'm very familiar with your work, and a number of our college students are working in various, you know, businesses that you own, and I do know your commitment to work development and supporting the growth in the communities in which you are having your businesses, it speaks for itself. So, I really appreciate the work that you have done, will continue to do, but also for Community Investment getting back with you so quickly.
I would say, real quick, and following from Ms. White said, I was telling Ms. Patel on Friday, I taught my daughter how to drive in that parking lot, and, you know, one of the reasons why it was able to teach her in that parking lot, because there was nothing there. And now, I said, you gotta find another spot. I was there when Kmart closed, and that was a sad time. I remember talking to one of the chamber commerce persons years ago, they said, this is not a good side of town to invest in. I was stunned. And now, I sit back and you see yours potentially coming, everything else there. It's really nice to just drive past there and see so much development and exciting times coming to the southwest side there, the bypass and everything. So, I'm really grateful that's what you are doing, and I thank you for including me in on it early, so I appreciate that, Mr. Damage. It's always nice to work with you. Thank you.
I'll make a comment, too. I wanna thank you for your investment as well, and I like the fact that you have a plan A and plan B for the other property, that is not gonna sit empty. And, you know, anyone Oliver wants to teach drive, they can teach, drive through or drive through. So, thank you so much. Make a motion for adoption. Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Purley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Congratulations.
Ms. Fowler, 1866.
1866. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3201 West Crowe Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Ethanol Plant LLC.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, community investment sends us forward with no recommendation due to lack of form.
Thank you. Presenter?
Sir, Dan Markmeyer, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. While pales in comparison to black walnut ice cream, all three $30 million investment in our community is what I've got for you. Everybody knows, I think, herself, that Ethanol is former Noble Americas, recently, at the beginning of this year, purchased by Mercuria, who has made a very wonderful commitment to invest in this plant, invest in our community, and retain and create some new jobs in an effort to get this plant up to date and up to speed with modern equipment and so on, specifically with, again, nearly a $30 million investment in new equipment that they're about to launch, installation of in the next few months. It's going to increase their manufacturing capacity significantly from 65 million gallons per year to 100 million gallons per year. And what's important about this, beyond just our city and the jobs that are here, is the ripple effect in the region, in addition to what they purchased now, an additional 12 and a half million bushels of corn purchased by local farmers like the fields that we just annexed just south of it. And a ripple effect that goes beyond that to an anticipated $140 million of direct local economic benefit every year. They will retain 66 new jobs, and with the expansion and increased efficiency of this, they will create five new jobs. Just in the interest of time, and I'll bring the, excuse me, petitioner is up in a moment, but I'll jump ahead here. Just to kind of drill down what we're proposing here, it is a five-year, again, it's personal property abatement, so it's a phase-in. The amount that would be abated in that period of time would be 482, just over $482,000. On this investment alone, they'll still pay $3,220,000. Noting the bottom line there, they are a tremendous contributor to the community from a tax standpoint. In the 10 years, looking out 10 years into the future, we estimate their tax contribution to the community is gonna be well over $8 million. Again, that pretty much sums up, I think, what I have. We have the petitioners here, Mr. Major Rhodes, the plant manager, and Rob Winkle, the CFO, if you'd like to hear from them, and if you have any questions, we have to address them.
Gentlemen, if you would, come up, state your name and address, and just give a brief summary of what you're doing.
Major Rhodes, 1415 enchanted forest, South Bend. What we're actually doing is increasing the capacity of the plant, 65 million to 100 million. Like Dan said, we will be taking on five more people. This is a two-year experience that we're actually doing, so it will take a little time, but as he said, we will be paying back to the community roughly $8 million.
Thank you.
I'll just take care of that.
Anything you wanna add?
No, not at all.
Nope, good. Any questions from council?
I just have one, and if you could maybe share what would be the average income level of those five new employees?
$20, $25, dollars out.
Great, thank you.
Just to reiterate from committee, is it Mr.?
Broden?
I'm sorry, sorry, Mr.?
Mr. Winks.
Winks?
Winks is my name, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, just to reiterate, if we were not to move forward with this abatement, what would be your plan, your contingency plan?
My name is Rob Winks, 50946 Hawthorne Drive, South Bend. The plan would go forward without the abatement. It makes economic sense, but with the abatement, it actually makes it to be much more viable of a project. The issue is, we have a plant that is basically running at 65% of capacity, and when you're a process manufacturer, you must use your assets to 100% capacity, and we're basically forced to make the decision and go ahead and do the improvements, because we need to improve the reliability and the output.
Rob, yeah, thank you for that, and I understand that as part of my job, I oversee a smaller, much smaller, smaller-scale manufacturing facility, and some of the equipment that we buy, we're buying a piece of equipment that's being installed in December for $150,000. So, not quite to your level, but at the same time, I feel like we knew, getting into the business, that that was part of it, right? I mean, that we needed to make improvements to the infrastructure of our plant from time to time, and so I guess, I guess for me, I've not seen a real compelling reason to abate in this instance. So, I guess maybe I can give you a chance to respond to that, but again, you said yourself that the plan moving forward would be the same way, because it makes smart business sense, right? Yeah, okay. You don't have to respond. That's a comment.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Vice President Davis?
When you look at the future of ethanol, where are we now in terms of, there's been up and down with a lot of things, of course. We had our big challenges a few years ago. Where are we now in terms of the market and the projections of the success of your plant?
Well, right now, ethanol, you know, is, we're 10% blend. There is initiative, we go 15% blend, so that will get us into, you know, more markets. So, the outlook for ethanol is on a uprise.
That's good, that's good. And so, as we look at the five extra jobs, what stimulators you have to consider, five extra jobs at this time?
Well, as we increase capacity, we're taking more grain from the area, so we need five additional people to actually be able to take that grain in during the times of take form.
Okay, cool. You live right in the area, so I appreciate it.
I do, yeah.
Oh, I know, I recognize your area.
Mr. Gordon?
If the ethanol market doesn't quite develop the way you hope it would, maybe you could go to corn liquor or vodka or something like that.
Okay. I'm a therapist, don't worry about it, no.
All right. Bring it back to reality. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, 1866, please come to the podium. Mr. Brown?
Senator Brown, 222, East of Rife, South Bend. I'm glad to see that particular plant is still here, because I ran gas to that particular plant, and the top portion of that, I don't know where it's separated, I may have pictures, but if you're in the term crane, you sit in that top part, and the crane boom buckle, and came back on the crane, the guy survived, of course, by the lucky guy, but he's still alive. I've been tired now 10 years from when I dug the gas, I dug the gas line to feed gas to that plant. So, he's still here, and I hope this probably works, because I dug the gas line to feed gas to that plant. And like I said, if you like to check the history, the top part fell backwards over the cranes, he's still alive, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing none. Turn back to council.
Before we have a comment, again, I'd just like to say I'm glad to see the strength of the South Bend Ethanol Plant. Six years ago was a different day, everything was shut down, and it was frightening times for us to live out there. And so, it's amazing to see, six years later, we are looking at growth and moving forward. So, I'm glad to see that is moving forward. I'd just like to, again, keep our community investment, when these kind of things continue to come to the sixth district, I'd just like to continue to be kept up to date. With that, I'd like to continue to, I'd like to reach, we haven't yet corresponded and met, and so I'd like to reach out to you all. We have come on over there, I can walk over there from my house, and so let's continue to do that, as we continue to see the strength of this plant move forward and hop out here in South Bend.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to-
Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Just make a quick comment regarding, I'd certainly be supporting, again, I think roughly six years ago, the plant was out of operation. Now, did that cost a number of really good jobs in our community, but also some additional issues from that facility not working. So, certainly want to continue to support the ethanol plant and making sure it's successful. And $140 million of direct local economic benefit is a big, big number, when you think about local farmers and their ability to have success in our region, so again, we would support this.
And $140 million, just regarding the other deals that we had with the different farms, a lot of them, in my conversations with the farms that we have on the other zoning issues, many of them do direct business here locally.
Absolutely.
So, it's money that stays right here in the city, South Bend, and our county, and so it's not money that goes other places, it's right here, right in there, so I'm glad to see that. Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschman?
Nay.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Remove first readings. Ms. Fowler, would you please read 5618?
First reading, 5618. First reading on the orders of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, Anson, and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and the minimum zoning ordinance for property located in Platoon City. Contiguous therewith, House of Municipal District Number 4, for 17330, State Road 23, South Bend, Indiana, previously, Bill Number 1217.
I'd like to make a motion that 5618 be set for second reading and public hearing on the 12th of November and be sent to the Zoning and Annexation Committee.
I've actually got a question.
Okay.
If I could, sorry, it's a, that's our turn, Mr. Fowler, sorry. If we hear this 1112, right, given the timeline that we've heard earlier, so that would mean that the, because we can't adopt the fiscal plan area.
You have a public hearing, second reading, public hearing on your record 12. You can't vote on passage until 14 days after the public hearing. That will take us till the record is-
Till the 26th.
Yes.
And then there's a 30-day period after the mayor signs it.
Correct.
So, assuming the mayor signs it that night, we could get this in just under the wire.
Yes.
There's a little bit of an advertising lag, too, right?
Yeah, we could take care of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm mildly concerned. It gets close, but it's still a window.
Yeah, we can take care of the advertising.
Okay.
We can get it in there earlier, assuming the deadline.
All right.
It's cutting it very well.
It's cutting it very close. All right, all right. John, does John need to make the motion?
Yeah, we have these dates before we set the-
I'll second John's move, I'm sure you can do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there anything other unfinished business? Seeing none.
The unfinished, I do. The unfinished business?
Yeah.
Wear it on the, not the ethanol plant, it's on my head. All right, Mark.
All right, Mark.
The, um, yes, I will get back to you, still offering dates at this point. But I'll update this week.
I saw the news, it was talking about, they're looking at doing a stop in New Carlyle, and they're doing a study to do with having a stop in New Carlyle for the South Shore. I mean, if they have a stop in New Carlyle, with all due respect, the idea of even having a 10-minute kind of a speed train goes down the toilet very quickly, because it goes from South Bend, no matter if it goes from downtown or wherever it goes from the airport, all we just, and then it stops in New Carlyle, then it shoots on out.
There's no plan.
So that, to me, was amazing, but New Carlyle actually gets a complete stop, so, but the study for that is not being done by city dollars, but I think that throws something that we have to consider at the whole table, the fact that they wanted to invest in that kind of a study to even look at that area, was in, and other reasons why I think is important for all the entities that need to come together, because for us to invest city dollars in that, and then they come up with another study, there's so many different studies going on with this whole development, it's been amazing, so to sit in the same room and to deal with that, I think is highly important.
I will respond back to you this week, Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry, is there, was that a request for an update?
Pardon me?
Was that a request for an update? I didn't exactly-
Yeah, because of the fact that we had, during the time, what was it, August? When they made a presentation to us, they said that they were gonna get back to us, was it July?
Yeah, it was August.
It was August, okay, August. And we were hoping that they would get back by September, but it's probably too soon, and now we're coming up, hopefully we're here something where everybody can come together. It's getting near the end of the year, and I know everybody's schedules are getting tighter, but whether it's the end of the year or the beginning of the new year, I still think it's nice to have the county council, the city council, all the players involved, airport, NICD, so we can not be planning one there, here, there, here, there, here, there, because everything is connected. If they're planning to stop in New Carlyle, the idea of fast track to South Bend doesn't make sense, and so everything has to sit back and be involved in the process.
That's for the population between here and there.
So where are we going with, I guess I'm trying to understand where are we going with your question?
I'm gonna respond back this week.
Right now, where are we going?
We have a committee meeting or not?
No, no, I'm gonna respond back with, Vice President Davis asked me to look into getting all the entities together. I've reached out to them with efforting dates that everybody has in common that they can meet. There's delays with everybody getting through their budgets, and I will kick that ball up and respond back to what I understand we can do this week. Okay?
I'm at peace.
All right, cool. Thanks for bringing it up. Anything else on our unfinished business? Anything on our new business?
Yes, the, again, I'm announcing on Monday, not Monday, Wednesday, 10 o'clock, the Dock Park, opening over at Ron Belletti, so looking forward to being over there.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll move to the privileged floor. This is your opportunity to speak to counsel. You have three minutes. You cannot talk about anything that's on the agenda tonight or anything that we discussed. If you would, Gavin Furley will set his timer and give you a 30-second exit warning, and please state your name and address, and go.
Senator Brown, 222, East of Ithaca, South Bend. I'd like to thank the mayor of the city, who's our leader and the man of the city, the Mayor of the Community Park, Mayor of the Search and恤, located in the second district. It means a lot to those people, the mayor to come out and listen to their concerns and what you're trying to do in the neighborhood. It really meant a lot to them, and I was proud to see him there on the west side. Those people are trying to make a difference in the second district. I was very proud to see him there. So on my behalf, I would just thank the mayor for being there for those people.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Vice President Davis?
I need to say one more thing. I'd like to thank Councilwoman White for leading out the press conference today, and I thought it was well attended, and I thought it was needed, and give you the final comment to say what your thoughts were.
Oh, just thank everyone for attending. We had a number of elected officials, both from the city, the South Bend School Board, as well as the county, and at the state level as well. And the goal was to support elected officials to come to stand in unity in terms of the violence, but also to say that we will not tolerate violence in our community. We know that there are a lot of factors which impact violence, but we stood together and made a statement, and we're gonna continue to work very closely together to address this issue.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And more to come on that. Entertaining motion adjourned.
Someone's expected.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.